Okay, good evening. My name is Jack Dearborn. I'm the chairman of the Ware Zoning Board of Adjustments. This is the January 4th, 2022, meeting at 7:30. And we have two cases this evening. Case number one, excuse me, case number 01-2022. And this Timothy S. Trudell and Jasmine Trudell. 37 Kobe Road, tax map 412, lot 002 residential. Ad cultural zone, special exception, Article 19, Section 1910-1. Requesting a special exception to build an ADU on an existing home. And the second case this evening is number 02-2022. Avashon Realty Company, Inc., owner Dollar General. Applicant, 455 South Stock Highway, tax map 412, lot 4, excuse me, 248. Commercial zone, variance, Article 34, Session 34, Period 10, Period 3, Period 2. Applicant is seeking variance with the construction of a total of three signs where one is allowed, and that's a colon, 120.0 square feet total footage where 64 feet is allowed. Okay, let's see. Okay. Before we start, let me just kind of go down how we run it. This evening, we have only four members. So should anybody wish to push this off to the following meeting, next meeting, next month, to give possibility of getting five members, you can do it when I call the case if you wish to continue it. If you wish to go forwards, that's fine, it's your prerogative. The reason why I say that is, it's a lot easier getting five yes votes if there's five people, or three yes votes if there's five people, a little less if there's four, even really less if there's three. So tonight, we have four, so just making sure the people, if they wish to, they can push back the meeting. But let's assume at this point, we're going forward. When we call the meeting, the particular case, we'll discuss that. What I will do is, I already read the itinerary. What I will do is take the first case. I've asked somebody in the positive to make, to move, to move to accept the application.
You have to seat him, don't you?
Well, I'm not, I'll do it now, but I could do it, I usually do that.
You ask for a motion before we get carried away.
No, I asked for a motion, I'm explaining my process.
Okay.
But we can talk about who's here. Gary?
Gary Shelto, alternate.
Michael Meyer, member.
Malcolm Wright, member.
Thank you. These are the four members for this evening. Now, I will ask for a motion to accept the application. The reason for this will give us a reason, give us an opportunity to take a look at the case. If we feel it's properly filled out, we will ask for a motion. And if the board feels it is second, and then a motion, we will then accept the application, move forwards. If not, we'll do something with it. Other than that, after that, I will ask the applicant to please come up to the podium, state his or her name, and then I will ask if the board has any questions of the applicant before we start. If there are none, I'm going to ask the applicant to speak briefly about the overview of their case, so that we kind of understand it. And if, once that's done, and there's no questions of the board as a result of that, I'll ask the applicant to move forwards. In the case of a variance, to read the question for the five points of hardship, and to read their answer for the five points of hardship. So in the case of a special exception, which we have the first case this evening, there are five points which we'd ask the question to be at, to be read. And I think there's, actually in an ADU, there's seven pieces to Article 19. So each one of those questions should be read and answered. Once the applicant has given their testimony on their requested case, then I will ask the board if they have any questions. Being none, I will then ask the applicant to sit down, and I'll ask for approving of butters who wish to speak to the case. And if, we'll go through them sequentially. Everybody has to come up to the microphone, so that our, I guess it's YouTube, can plainly hear what's being said, and also, the person who does the minutes will take Naomi's notes plus validate or amplify notes based on what's done in the YouTube. So given that, once everybody from approving of butters has gone through, I will ask for disapproving of butters, do the same, one at a time, come up, be recognized by the chair, come up, speak their name, give their testimony, sit down. Then I'll ask for other boards, and finally, public at large. Once that's done, I'll ask the applicant if he or she wishes to say anything more, rebut anything that may have been said. And when that individual's done, sit down, and then I'll ask for approving of butters, disapproving of butters, public at large, other boards again. Everybody gets two shots at this. We want to make sure we proceed by procedure, because the quickest way to get a case thrown out is to have it be seen in the courts as being due process being violated. So we try very hard to stay on our, on our procedure. So with that said, oh, then after that, I'm sorry, when each case has been finally heard, and I will shut down the public hearing, and then I will ask for a motion on case of a variance, I'll ask for a motion to prong one, always stated in the affirmative. Yes means yes, no means no, makes it simple. We're not doing, dealing with double negatives. And then we will, I will ask for a second after the motion. We should discuss, and it's only for the board to discuss, and after a discussion, we'll take a vote. We can put conditions typically on the first condition, but it can be put on any of them. So in order to pass a variance, three votes are required in affirmative. That's why I mentioned, if you had three people up here tonight, you need all three. If you had four people, you need just three. If you had five people, you need just three. Every one of the five points of hardship have to be in the affirmative, at least three votes per. If not, you fail. And one of the problems with a variance is, should you, should the variance fail, very difficult to come back again unless it's seen as being significantly different request. If you just didn't like the answer, you want to come back, probably not going to, we probably would not hear the case. We'd have to take it up at that time. If somebody doesn't like the answer that we give, you can request a rehearing. Rehearing typically is for something new, but if something you just want to restate, or you should have had an opportunity to put it in there original, it may not, may not grant a rehearing. Once, once you have requested, and maybe been turned down for the variance, request a rehearing be turned down, you have a direct appeal within 30 days to Superior Court, the New Hampshire Superior Court. And that's basically the process we go through here tonight. Not yet. Win your case, okay? Okay. This is Dollar General. And this is 121. Okay. I am going to ask for a motion to accept case 01-2022.
Move to accept case 01-2022?
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion on the case? Let me just go briefly through this. There is a cover sheet, which kind of is a check sheet. There is an application filled out. There is special exception with an explanation. Okay, you, you did a serial list of A, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Four is missing.
It's in there at the bottom.
Huh?
It's towards the bottom. It's, it's out of order, but it's in there.
Okay, they're identified. There is a quitclaim deed. Okay, I guess Timothy gives Jasmine the authority. There are the, Section 2, which is the special exception requirements. There's a very dark Google, but makes out. And 37 Kobe. There is a... Where is it on this map?
You don't see it, turn here.
Oh, okay, good. Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Two, second lot, okay. There's a picture, oh, there's actually a tax property card here.
Yep.
There is a topo. It doesn't give where this topo, you know where this topography graph was made?
Topography, that's from the GIS map, from the GIS.
I think that's where your subject is on.
Oh, that one, I'm sorry.
That's where the subject is on.
It was what?
In the building file.
Okay. So the source is building file? At the town office?
Correct.
Is this a foundation?
This is a foundation, um, yes, it's from the metal building company specifically.
So these are the people it's going to?
Correct.
Okay. And they're showing some kind of a sign. Is this, is this the building, you're building this?
Yes, it's a 30 by 25 metal structure on the slab. So this slab is...
Is this attached to your house?
It will be, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, the application. So, all those in favor? All right, let's do it this way, I'm sorry. Gary?
Aye.
Thank you. Mark?
Aye.
Malcolm, thank you. All right, and the reason to do that is so people can hear the voice individually. Okay, if you'd like to come up? Any questions of the applicant before we start? Case?
Excuse me, can I say something just real quick? Can I say something?
No. Are you related to this?
Yes. This is, this is my daughter, and I'm going to be, this, this, this structure is for me to live in.
You certainly have an opportunity to, but it's not now.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, just wanted to, just wanted to ask.
No problem.
Okay, are you going to, on this page here?
Okay.
This, and then you also have it typed up. Is there a difference?
The typed up, it specifically points out each section of Article 19 to say that this ADU will be following all the regulations.
But this is the one here that really is. If you want to read this question and read the answer.
Sure.
So we have it in the record?
Of course.
This allows everybody at home, anybody in the room that doesn't have one of these to know what's going on.
Want me to just read one through seven, read all the way down?
Yeah. Read this question, then read the answer, and go to two, three, four.
Okay, number one.
Thank you.
The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use or uses in terms of overall community development. Yes, the site is an appropriate location for an ADU, and is a location as described in Article 19, Section 10, units 1, 1 through 8, where ADUs are allowed. Number two, the proposed use will not adversely affect the neighborhood and shall produce no significant reduction of real estate values in the neighboring area. The proposed use will not affect the neighborhood other than one additional car and one person living on this road. Neighbors will likely not even notice a change. Number three, the proposed use will not be a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicular traffic to pedestrians. Only one additional car will be added to the already existing dwelling vehicle inventory.
Okay.
Number four, the proposed use will not cause an undue burden on the town through the provision of basic town services. No. The proposed dwelling will be tied into the existing dwelling's utilities. Only one person will be residing in the proposed ADU, and they are elderly.
Okay.
Number five, adequate off-street parking be provided if determined necessary by the zoning board of adjustment. There is ample space in the driveway and open area for adequate off-street parking.
Okay.
Number six, a buffer may be required to screen neighboring uses from the proposed use. Buffers may be fence screens, dense planting of suitable trees and shrubbery, or naturally occurring shrubs and trees. I do not believe any buffers are required, because no neighbors or businesses are visible where the dwelling will be. If required, then we will do so.
Okay.
Number seven, the zoning board of adjustment in granting any special exception may include such restrictions or conditions to ensure compliance with this section. No restrictions or conditions should be required. The proposed dwelling conforms with all of the sections written in Article 19 of the zoning ADU laws.
Would you come here, please? I'd like you to show me something on your map, on your diagram. This is your new piece. If you want to come here, you're welcome to. This is your existing house? This is your new addition?
This exists.
Okay.
Already. There's an addition here that we will be taking down and in place putting this 25 by 30 ADU. So this section already exists here.
And it's a, so you got to demo this?
Correct.
And you can put a still?
Can you see that in the picture? The demo?
No, it's the back part of the house.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, it's the back. It's, yeah, facing the back one.
So you got to build here?
Correct.
And where will you be accessing the dwelling?
So there is already an exterior door here, but the new, on the dwelling...
How are you going to go into this building from your new envelope?
There's an, there's already an access door into the existing house.
So you're going to be using this to the access?
That's the access to the existing house, yes.
Yeah, but you're going to demo this, you're going to use that for your new building?
Yes.
And where will the door going into your exterior door be on here?
Yeah, that's on the drawing, hold on, right here. Existing house.
Yeah.
Basically the street, is it open? So windows, windows, there'd be a door, there's going to be a front door, they're here.
Okay, and where is the front of the house relative to this?
On the other side.
This, this is the front, is that right?
The front of the house faces the street, that's where.
That's another condition, okay. Do you exceed the 750 feet?
30 by 25, 750.
Exactly 750.
Yeah. Just making sure. And any other things we need to consider?
I just had a question about septic. The, the property card says it's a four-bedroom home. There's a couple other references that say there's three bedrooms, so I just, can you clarify that a little bit?
So it is a three bed, it's, I think they're considering this addition, the fourth bedroom?
Okay.
So in other words, one bedroom where we were replacing one bedroom.
Okay, okay. In your comments, you specifically said that there was a septic design, which I saw, but it doesn't...
It's a design I have, and it doesn't...
The town should have had one on file. If they don't, something happened.
I'm just, if the, oh, no, not a problem. If the...
Property card say what?
The property card says it's four-bedroom, so I'm assuming that the septic is set up for a four-bedroom.
It's going to be set up.
And all the property card also says the septic was, I know, I don't know if this is relevant or not, but it says that the septic, there was a...
2001?
Yeah, it was replaced. And so I wonder if that was at the same time as the addition.
Possible, yeah. Okay, so I, I just wanted to clarify, because you specifically mentioned that it's being approved by New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, so...
In other, in other words, we haven't done it yet, but I'm going to...
Why don't you go up there, I just so make sure we can hear everybody.
Absolutely.
Yes, so we want to make sure that the septic has proper capacity. So we're going to make sure it's double-checked.
But if you have a four-bedroom house, and all they get that built, you'd have to have a four-bedroom septic.
Correct.
Was the house originally four-bedroom before they put this addition on?
It was three-bedroom.
Okay. So they require to expand the, expand the bedroom to four, and if you're tearing that one down, and you're putting another bedroom, then you still have four.
Right.
Yeah. Septic is based on the gallons per bedroom, not how many people live there.
Understood, yes. My confusion, or the reason we wanted to double-check is the exact reason that you said. In one place, it says four bedrooms, and in another place, it says three bedrooms, so...
Understood. Was the addition on the property when you purchased it?
Yes.
Well, if you want to put a condition, is that you validate the design, because the town aware should have on file a septic design.
I, I was, I was considering that, but seeing how's the property card already, already says it's four, and the, the, yeah, I'm good too. I, I just wanted to make sure we weren't going from a three to a four.
Okay. So, um, do you have anything else you wish to say? You got another shot later if you wish.
Yeah, it's...
Okay.
I think I'm okay.
Let me run it through here. You have a seat place?
Yes.
Approving of butters, wish to speak on this request? Disapproving of butters, wish to speak? Public at large, other boards, who wants to speak?
Your opportunity.
Very good. All right, you wish to speak again? Okay, I'll go again. Public at large, other boards, approving of butters, disapproving of butters. Being in that, all those in favor? Excuse me, all those, I will shut down the public hearing, sorry. Motion for this single motion on the positive for accepting.
I'll make the motion in the positive.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you. I think this is pretty straightforward. It meets the condition on a special exception. You get it by write if you meet these specified special requirements. The reason the town does is, so there's some things you just can't write enough paragraphs for. So if they put out the conditions, and then we can take a look at it and decide if it meets it based on our observations. If it does, we can vote yes for it. If it doesn't, we vote no, so with that said, or they can either way. So with that said, being most discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's do this with Gary.
Aye.
Aye.
Malcolm.
Aye.
And Jack. Aye. 4-0. Congratulations. Early night.
Yeah, you're on, you're on.
Okay.
You're not going to pan, you're done.
Of course.
So can I say something?
It's done. It's done.
No.
Building permit.
Building permit, right. So I can call the building contractor? I'm going to bail theory him.
Yeah, you can call him tomorrow, but you're welcome to call him tomorrow if you see him, he's been sick for two days. Let me give him a call.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Second case of this evening, this is case 20-2022.
Before we accept this application, I would like to discuss it through the...
Well, let's, we can do that in discussion.
Right.
Okay. Let's do it in discussion.
The reason I bring it up now is because I don't know if the application is complete.
Well, we will take that up in discussion.
Okay.
Okay? So, thank you. This is Dollar General, just going quickly. It's an application, there's a check sheet, there is a, first page of the application, the variance request, Article 343410, 3410 dot 3 dash 2. Three total signs, one is allowed, 120.04 square feet of total signage where 64 square feet is allowed. Okay, let's see what's going on here. Okay, we've got attached letters. It's signed by Carolyn Parker, whoever signed it. I'll overlook the Ms. Sousa, but there is a letter here to Naomi, and looks like your five points of hardship. And there is a tax map. There is a consent form. It's a building inspection, building permit. There is several, several, there's a top view of the layout on the site. There's a very dark picture, which I can't really make out, but I know it's Google wrote because I can see the labels there. It shows a reasonable rendition of the sign and a person standing against the wall, and that is titled, well, it's titled, but looks like a design of the sign. There is another design of the sign, this is large. DJ, I guess, is taking this Dollar General, 18-inch Dollar General LED, Raceway, HWL. There it is. What is this 15-foot exposed pole? Is that the one on the street?
I don't know what, that's not part of my application. What is it?
Let's see her. Is this the one out by the street on a pole?
Yeah, it was with the paperwork, it's right here. Oh, okay.
Okay.
There's building plans in that here.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be, because I'm going for those two signs, but...
Yeah, but that building, it's a 15-foot pole.
And there's a street-size view.
I thought it was the Raceway that it was on, I didn't read it. Throw that piece out.
We will, there's a side view of the Route 114 side, and appears to be the parking lot side, which is on the north side of the building. Two views. Okay. Motion to accept the application?
Move to accept case 02-2022?
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. Way of discussion.
Yeah, this is unusual, but I don't see a deed here. And I'm left with a little bit of a question as to who is the actual owner of the lot. I know who owns Dollar 10.
I know, and I, I asked Avashon, and they said they didn't want to give it to me. So they went to the planning board, so they had me, because there would be a deed in the planning board, and the property just got purchased, so I don't, you know what I mean?
I don't want to, this is just for the application, mostly between us, and it does, but that does segue to my next issue, as far as the completion of the application.
Yep.
I don't see a butters list.
That's an issue.
Leads me to wonder if they've been properly notified.
No, they were, there's a list right here. Didn't, must not have done copy, if you don't have one, it looks like that.
No, we don't. I will see that over here.
Says that, and, and the butters, the certified slips are right here. The certified slips are right here.
Okay. Malcolm, do you have any other issues?
Pardon me?
Do you have any other issues?
That's it, no, we can't, thank you.
Don't say copy of a butters list.
We've got the return, return receipt, so it's...
I think what happened is probably just my office, Karen made the extra copies for you guys, and Katie was doing my butters notices. So that's why it ended up a little separated for a few minutes.
But do you have it in mine?
Yeah, you had, you had this, right, you took it from our tax map. You got our tax map, which is on there, and then it produces the butters list.
So which, where's the 114?
I just didn't print it.
Yeah, 114.
Who's coffee shop?
Could you do this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is the end, parking lot.
I didn't print the change of what I gave you.
All right, this is, you're Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have anything that says that she's able to represent that, that it doesn't list?
How do you, how are you associated with the owner's consent for sign installation and permit? I, and, de morne?
Yeah, it says and/or their subcontractor. That would be me.
And you are the sign person? Or you're the Dollar General?
I work for the sign person.
Okay, so you're the...
The person installing the signs hired me, because he doesn't love these.
Actually, that was another part of, a part of my concern is that I didn't see a clear letter of consent. And that's why I was wondering, I was looking for the deed, because I don't know who owns the lot.
Hope they do. Well, they do.
And there needs to be a, some sort of consent from the lot owner, because that's where the variance goes. I just feel like this might not be a complete application.
Well...
I can show...
Hang on. Since we're talking about issues. Number five is only answered in A. There's two conditions that are not answered, which are required, is I and II. So...
I thought they were only required to give something else.
You got, I'm just telling you, you got A or B, or you can do A and B, but you must do A, AI, and AII. So...
Five, and then there's these two.
So, um, I think we got two or three things here that we want to proceed with a proper application. And I think we might be able to overlook the butters list, but that should be included. We...
It was, I just, it was, she didn't include it with yours.
I'm just saying, we're here tonight, and this is what we're hearing for a case. We're the, sort of the judge, if you will. Our job is not to go looking for paper. So this is what we base our case on tonight, not what everything else is out there. So I think it's defective in the form of I and II and III.
I can answer those questions while I have the variance.
Well, we'll find out. We're gonna take a...
Well, I don't want to get denied either, so what do you, what do you want me to do?
Well, we're gonna find out if the board wants to go forward with the hearing, then you can decide whether you want to have the case heard or not. So right now, we're trying to decide whether we hear the case or not. So when we get through that, you can decide whether you want to be heard or not, okay? So, have we discussed this enough? With that, all those in favor going forwards?
Nay.
I'm nay.
I think...
Yeah, nay.
I'm also nay.
Well, you go, so we don't do this again next time. Make sure we get it straight. A butters, which is strictly an administrative issue.
Yeah, it's, I already have it. Yep.
Okay, making one.
So you're gonna make me leave, so that I don't need the two questions on the application? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes. And you want to know, it was the third one? Deed.
The letter of consent.
So the deed, the butters, which I already have, but the deed in a clear consent?
No. What was the other one?
I think the letter that's in there would be sufficient if we had a deed.
That was, that was my first condition I put down.
That was why I was looking for the deed, is because I didn't have a clear view as to who the owner actually was.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of, that segues, they're connected. The, the letter of consent needs to be from the lot owner, and it doesn't really clearly say that in this letter of consent. And the deed isn't there for me to check.
I can only ask people for what I ask.
I'd accept the, I think I would accept the subcontractor. Please. No, this is not the talking part, okay? We're trying to decide. I could, I could accept the subcontractor being the directed from that letter.
Absolutely.
I'm okay with that. Deed, I and II, and it was one other, my original one, which I didn't write down.
I only have the deed, the butters, but I thought we handled that, because that was just not in your copy.
Mm-hmm.
Clear consent, I think you just decided that, and then the II, I and II of part five, that's all I've written.
I have one other question to Jack.
Well, we've already decided, but go ahead.
Well, no, I understand that, but on the questions, do we normally accept an attached letter, or do we need it in the...
It's always been a matter of...
Is the question online, Naomi, electronically online?
The application? The application is online for the variance, not for special exceptions.
You may want to explain to her that she ought to fill it out online. Okay. Done with that case within the evening? Yep. Any minutes?
Yeah, you have one set. December seventh.
One case. Two cases. We, we, yes, we didn't, I don't see much of an issue with the first case, which are the duplex. Yeah. And the second case B is Dylan Bogir.
George Road.
I think this five seventy-two was only the roadside of the...there's another number here as well, was it eleven hundred and two feet? I see this Chairman Devin Klass, the total disturbed area is seven fifty-two. I think I made a mistake there, and then somebody, I think you, Naomi, said there's another one here for eleven oh two. And I don't know if it's level two, three, or four, but it's eleven hundred and somewhere feet on the other side of the, of the culvert, the land side of the culvert, not the street side of the culvert. So if you look at the map, we need to update that.
It's actually in your discussion on page five. When you get down to the end, on point two...
Did we fix it there?
Well, on point two, you pointed out the lot's twenty-nine point three acres, and then you have eleven hundred and sixty-nine.
Yeah.
You defined, chosen spot has the least impact. That's not what you're looking for?
No.
Okay.
Because I saw five seventy-two, and I didn't see the eleven hundred and whatever on the other side of the culvert. So I only saw one side, unless that's the total of both sides, because the real question is, the total is up in the left-hand corner, right, of the print?
There was a, yeah, there was a...
So whatever the total is, that would be changed to that number.
I'm just gonna write check total with a question mark.
Since we don't know what it is, so I would request you change that to whatever that number is on there. What else we got?
Should we validate that before we vote on the minutes?
We can leave it over the next month, if you want to.
You do have an application for next month.
We do have a case?
Yeah. Monday's the deadline, I think you might have another one.
It is what it is.
Yeah, yep. So you're gonna table it to get the right number?
Well, I'm gonna ask you to get the right number. You wait for me, it probably won't be the right number. Is that it for this evening?
As far as I know.
Table it, or do we just adjourn?
Table the minutes?
Yeah.
Just table the minutes.
Yeah, just do it next morning.
The next one.
All right.
No other business? Most do...
We adjourn?
Second half.
Thank you. Gary? Sure, good. Jack? Aye.
Aye.
Good. We're done.